Excuse me, the agenda. I want to wish complete sincerity and how much we're going to miss Denise Donnelly as this is her last meeting. She has chosen not to run for reelection to the Board of Selectmen. And I want to thank Denise, and I'd love to hear from other members of the Board, of course, for all of her dedication for the last three years. She is clearly a steward of the environment, a very ethical person, and we could always count on her to have an objective, fair view on everything. And when I say we're going to miss Denise Donnelly, I mean that's with all sincerity. So Denise, we wish you luck. I know you're going to stay involved in the town and the things that make you passionate. But again, thank you for three wonderful years on the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you. And I have very mixed feelings tonight. So thank you, Paul, for your kind words.
Yeah. Who is your favorite selectman?
Wow.
Selectman George.
I just want to say, Denise, I've learned so much from you. You're so passionate about the environment and the town and all the things that make Rockport special, that I've really learned a lot from. Even though I've lived here all my life, I've learned a different aspect of town. And thank you very much for everything you've brought to the committee. And I wish you a lot of success, hopefully, on the planning board. And good luck with that next Tuesday.
Thank you. Thanks, Ruth.
Selectman Wilkinson.
I thought you were going to do this at the end. Now, I'm probably going to do it at the beginning of the meeting, which is not good. But I mean, honestly, not to repeat, but Denise, I don't, I mean, honestly, in all the time I've been on the Board, which I think is the longest of all of us, I don't know if I've ever worked with anyone who gets so passionate about, like, one issue at a time. And I have learned so much from you about being passionate and just working so hard for something that you believe in, whether it's personally or professionally. But it has truly been an honor to be on the Board with you. And the planning board's gain is surely our loss. But glad that you're sticking around and volunteering because the town is lucky to have you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Denise, for all your hard work. All right, let's move on. We're going to have a Covert 19 data presentation review.
Okay, that's me.
Thank you. Dr. Cohen.
Um, let's see. Do this slideshow presentation. So rather than just updating the data that we've been tracking, I have those slides in here, but I also want to present some information that focuses on the folks in Rockport who have had COVID-19 and who have recovered. So there'll be a little different presentation tonight so we can look at some of their characteristics. But let's, the basics, if you can see here, again, we're in relatively good shape. There have been some minor increases, but no second wave or expansion. There was actually an interesting comment on the State Health Department call this afternoon. As you know, they had pop-up testing last Wednesday and Thursday for folks who were at protests and rallies. And so there was a substantial increase in testing, but there was no increase in the percent positive, which was the good news. So it looks like from the preliminary data, again, it's fairly early, there doesn't seem like the folks who were involved in protests and rallies led to any increased early infection. So that was good news. These are data that we've seen before. The percent outcomes in terms of mortality are pretty much the same in Rockport, Cape Can, and across Massachusetts. Sex distribution is similar. Age distribution is, again, Rockport has a much older distribution of cases. And, you know, we were talking last week about indicators to track. This might be a really important one for us. If the age distribution in Rockport changes, that is something that we need to pay, I think, proactive attention to because there's evidence as places have opened up around the country, there's been rising currents of COVID among younger populations. And as we open up, a key indicator will be this age distribution to see what the impact potentially of opening up is in Rockport. So I think this is something we need to follow. Hospitalizations, again, Cape Can in general has a much higher hospitalization rate in Massachusetts, probably related to the age distribution, but I'm not exactly sure. Could also be related to testing. Underlying health conditions, pretty much the same in Rockport and Cape Can. I'll skip over some of these slides. They will all be posted. Mitch, I'll send you the slideshow after the meeting today. You can see there's 84 cases split equally in Rockport between cases acquired in long-term facilities and community cases. And the good news is 60% of the cases in congregate settings have recovered. So let me now focus on just a little more detailed description of folks who have recovered. There have been 29 who have recovered from COVID. These are folks in the community as opposed to folks who are living in congregate facilities. I thought it would make sense just to focus on this group in Rockport. The sex distribution is pretty even. The recovered persons, and you can see that about 2/3 of the recovered persons in Massachusetts were 50 years of age and older, again, reflecting the distribution, I think, of the age of our COVID cases. And most of the recovered cases, four out of five in Rockport, did not require hospitalization. So the recovered cases, 10, I think, probably tended to be slightly milder cases than those requiring hospitalization. And here, the distribution of underlying health conditions for folks who have recovered is pretty equal in Rockport between no underlying conditions and those with underlying conditions, although the numbers are relatively small and there is a substantial portion that are still under investigation. These are Rockport cases in congregate settings who have recovered. The 25 congregate-related cases, setting cases, have shown recovery. And the distribution by gender is pretty much the same in Rockport and Gloucester. And the age distribution, you can see 64%, almost 2/3 of the Rockport congregate setting cases were over the age of 70, clearly reflecting the nursing home population. And the, most of the recovered cases in the congregate facility did not require hospitalization, nine out of 10 cases. The good news, again, I think vigilance still needs to be maintained, but we haven't seen any dramatic increases in cases in Rockport or in Cape Can. And I think now is the time for us to be thinking about setting parameters about when we see trends for increasing cases. What will the triggers be for increased vigilance and perhaps change in the current status? I'm hoping we never have to do that, but it's quite possible that we will see rises as things get more open in our town. Just want to end with this slide. You can see, again, the percent tested in Rockport is below the state average. Indeed, the percent of persons who have been tested throughout Cape Can is lower than the state total. And we do need to get testing closer to Rockport. DPH has actually opened a link for testing sites. The closest testing site here is the CVS in Ipswich. So if you go onto the DPH link, you can see where testing sites are available. And I don't believe that you need any referral to the testing site in Ipswich and CVS. Finally, the percent positive in Rockport still is slightly higher than the state total, maybe reflecting that the testing focused on active cases or active exposures rather than broader community testing. So that's my presentation. Thank you. And I'll, any questions now, or we can get to them later? Sid?
Yeah, I have a question, Ruth. I'm unaware of what is the timeframe between the time someone goes to a protest and the test may show positive, especially if these were pop-ups were within three or four days? Are they likely to have missed things? Does anyone know what the timeframe is before tests start showing up positive once you've been exposed?
Well, you know, Barb and Ruth and Ron probably could address. I think most people think it's two to three weeks. So the pop-up testing probably would have been more effective in identifying Memorial Day gatherings and openings rather than protest rallies, although some did occur before last Friday.
But I think before we go hooray about the testing for the pop-up testing for the protest, we ought to see what things are like in two or three weeks, which might a lot more legitimate.
Absolutely right. Denise, everybody? Yeah?
Yeah, so I have a comment or two questions. It was my understanding that you still need a doctor's order to get a test, even at CBS. Does anyone know for sure?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah. Yeah, you can't just go ask for a test.
So on the website, it said no referral necessary, but that was confusing to me.
Well, I think they're doing, they're doing two tests. I think they're doing a nasal swab that they're trying to gather some data on, on whether that's going to be an effective methodology for testing. But for the nasal pharyngeal swab, the PCR testing, they are requiring physician or provider referral. So I think they're trying to collect some data on the nasal swab. That's a self-swab.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was going to say, but for the pop-up testing, I believe you did not need a referral.
No, you didn't. No. Right. My other question is, how do you define recovered? Are these people who have no lasting health effects from having experienced COVID-19?
Chasse or Teresa, do you want to help here?
We're considering recovered, kind of out of the isolation period. If somebody has been cleared from isolation, we're marking them as recovered. They may still have the loss of taste, loss of smell, but they can be out in public.
Chasse, this would also be a good opportunity, I think, if you could, you and Teresa could update us on contact tracing, how things are going.
Yeah, we, since we've had a little bit of time to take a deep breath and really kind of close out our cases and look at our, at each case, and, you know, mark people as recovered, which is a wonderful thing. We've also had time to look at our, our loss to follow-up percentage. So we were able to look at all of our cases. And I believe our loss to follow-up percentage of all cumulative cases over time has just been 2%. So we are very effective in reaching cases and their contacts, whether people answer the phone from the local Board of Health or what the reason is. We're very effective in getting through to people. So we're just going to continue with that model.
Thanks.
Ruth, can I ask a question?
Sure, Mary Beth.
Looking on the DPH website, I noticed that they're now saying how many antibody tests they're doing every day, but they don't, I can't find anywhere on their website or in the data that you give us what the percent positive is for the, for having the antibodies. Are you tracking that? Is that knowable?
That is knowable.
You know, we're notified if somebody tests positive and they're considered a probable case, and we do follow up on those cases. It's kind of an individual look into what was going on and what made them get the antibody testing.
So do you know how many of those people are testing? What percentage of those folks are testing positive?
You know, I'll see if I can find those data on the website. I'm pretty sure those are not available by town, but maybe there's a place on this dashboard for state total. Or if anyone listening in the public knows where those data are available, please let us know. We'd be happy to share that information.
The other question I have is, do the folks who have just the positive antibodies, are they considered a positive case? Like, are they going into the stats as a, if, like, let's say they didn't have the PCR test and they just had the antibody test, are they then considered a case that's being counted?
They're counted as a probable case.
I see.
And then, and then we investigate to see whether they're actively ill at this time. We're seeing a lot of people who were sick back in March, they were exposed to a positive case that they themselves were unable to get testing at that time because they didn't fit the criteria.
Right.
So Teresa or?
You're a positive.
Are you doing, are people who test positive for antibodies routinely given PCRs as well?
We do recommend that.
We are seeing, we are seeing some of those folks come through our drive-through for PCR.
Yeah. It's just rarely done at the same time. In a perfect world, we'd see people go for a serology and a PCR on the same day, but we never see that. So it's, it ends up being two steps.
Well, we do, we're very happy about it. Gives us a lot more information about what's going on.
We are too.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cohen. At this point, excuse me, we'd like to continue on with the, the selectman part of the agenda. We have the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes, 71 Long Beach lease to reflect a transfer of ownership, appointment of seasonal parking control officers, and solid waste service contract. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There, there is. I move that the Board approve all non-held items on the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes for zero. Thank you, everyone. The action items. Number one is a sign permit for C and Sella. Is there a motion? Then we can discuss it.
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the sign permit request for C and Sella at 21 Dock Square, number three, as submitted.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving second. Okay, do we have anyone here to discuss the sign?
No discussion needed, Mr. Chair, from the individual. It's a standard request in front of the Board. It's slightly larger than is currently allowed without the selectmen's approval.
Perfect.
Yeah, it looks really nice, as I saw the plan.
Yeah. It's going to fit nice between those windows. It looks nice.
Certainly will. That's great. Okay, roll call, vote. Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes for zero. That's great. Okay, moving on to the 1/12 budget approval. Is there a motion, excuse me, a motion to approve the 1/12 budget approval?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the 1/12 FYI 21 operating budget as recommended by the Town Administrator and Finance Director, and direct its transfer to the Department of Revenue.
Okay, you've heard them. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Mitch, do you want to, just, I know what we're talking about here, but it's just for the public.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. So this is required since our town meeting is after June 30th. This is a 1/12 budget plus any items that we normally pay out in July after the budget is approved. For example, we have several lump sum payments that are made every year. Retirement is paid in July for a discount. Our portions of our contributions to the stabilization funds, et cetera, are made in July. So this is required. It'll go to DOR after the clerk certifies it tomorrow morning. And it's just to carry us through July until we get to a town meeting. It's in line with what the Board previously looked at.
Right.
And what discussed, it's really, it's month one, just to keep the lights on, the paychecks going out, and the bills being paid.
Wonderful. Okay. Excellent. Any other further discussion from members of the Board? Hearing none, let's go, roll call, vote. Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes for zero. And the last item on our action list this evening is end of the year transfers. Is there a motion?
There is. There is. Mr. Chair, I move that the selectmen approve and ask the chairperson to sign the following year-end transfers. $8,500 from civilian dispatch to lifeguards, $7,000 from legal fees to FICA Medicare, and $3,000 from civilian dispatcher to police equipment maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion on the transfers? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes for zero. Very good. And we're going to, I'm going to take a break here and pass it over to Dr. Newman for the Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We have three sets of minutes that were distributed May 28th, June 2nd, and June 9th. And we discussed the May 28th minutes last meeting last week, and there was some discussion. Sid, you brought up some points on page two, under consideration of current traditional restrictions related to COVID-19. And we have an updated version of these minutes. Did you provide the text?
Yes.
No. So obviously, you're satisfied with it. Is there any further discussion of this set of minutes, especially the section that Sid changed? No?
No.
And we've all had the opportunity to see June 2nd and June 9th minutes. Are there any concerns or questions proposed at Enda? Anything? No. We have a motion then regarding the minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the previous three meetings' minutes that haven't been done with the additional corrections of the 28th of May.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second.
Do we have any other discussion? No? Can we just raise our hands all in favor of accepting the minutes?
We need a roll call vote.
We need it? Okay. Okay, roll call, vote. Barb McCarthy?
I approve.
Sid Wedmore?
Yes.
Ruth Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So thank you, five nothing. All right. The second item on our portion of the agenda regards the septic upgrade at 4 Irvine Road. Leslie, do you want to lead us off?
Sure. John Judd is here to present the plan for 4 Irvine Road. And do you want to hear his presentation first?
Yes, great.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, John Judd, engineer with Gateway Consultants. This is a, an upgrade to an existing failed septic system at 4 Irvine Road. It's owned by Barbara Baker, and this is a, again, a replacement system that asks, requests for three variances that is shown on the plan. Mitch, I'm not sure if they, the other, yeah, if we can put that up, that's great. So what we have is, we have a wetland area on the northerly portion of the corner of the property at Kelowna and Irvine, as shown in the shaded portion. And the existing house is shown over, is labeled. And the, again, we have a failed cesspool on the property that is not functioning clearly at the property. So we've upgraded the system to meet Title V. We are looking for three variances, as shown on the plan, primarily due to the groundwater and the proximity of the wetlands on the property. But it's certainly an improvement over what's there. We're going to be looking for reduced setback to the wetlands for the tank and the field. And we are looking for a one-foot reduction to the required four-foot offset to groundwater table. That's the vertical offset. We're going to be using a pressure distribution as standard policy with the Rockport Board of Health when looking for that variance. And the last, last variance is actually a Conservation Commission variance, which is the same situating components within 100 feet of the wetland area. So that's a brief presentation, and I can answer, Leslie can answer any questions that you might have.
Leslie, your thoughts?
I think the plan is very good.
John, how far is the setback from the wetlands? I can't really.
Okay, so on the chart, we have 100-foot requirement where we're proposing 98 feet to the tank, and that's just so we can, you know, ensure that we have gravity flow from the house into the tank. And then to the field, we're 62 feet.
And what was the previous on that?
The previous is a, I'm sorry, it's a failed septic cesspool, which is adjacent to the tank, and that's, it's closer to 100. However, it's in the groundwater, and there's no room to put the new leach field in that location.
So the old leach field was closer to the house, like, to the left of the existing dwelling there where the tank is now?
Correct, correct. And it's, cesspool, it wasn't a leach field, so.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's just the variance for the wetland, for the leach field, and for the tank? So those are the two variances that you're looking for?
Yes, and also, we're looking for a reduction to the required four feet above the seasonal high water table.
Oh, yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what, is there a setback to the property line on these leach fields?
Yeah, typically, it's 10 feet minimum. We need all those requirements.
We do, because that looks kind of close there. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
John, how old is the old one?
Well, it's an old, it's as old as the house, from what I understand. And we look back in the records, you know, we have plans out here from the 50s.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Ron? If, I would, I would make a motion, we accept this plan with the variances.
Anytime you have a cesspool, you have the public health at risk. And that's an area where there is a lot of swampy areas around. This will definitely be an improvement, especially with the pressure distribution system. And I don't think the variances are a big consequence, especially when you're improving your system with a modern design. So I move, we accept it.
I second that motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? No? Bruce? How do you vote? Oh, sorry. Yes. Sid?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's, that completes Section D for us.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Newman. Let's go to letter E, the COVID-19 testing. Is there any update that either Board should know about in the public?
Actually, we have gone to universal testing of all inpatients. So we now have a broader base of folks that are coming to the hospital that we are just testing, not symptom-based, but universally. So all inpatients. All, so that includes all labor and delivery patients, all med surg and ICU patients, all behavioral health patients, all OR surgical patients, all procedural patients. So we're getting close to what I would call a more public health model of testing. I would say that we have not found a lot of folks that have come for non-COVID-related illnesses or for procedures or care that have turned up positive. So I think that what we're seeing is a pretty healthy group of folks coming back into healthcare right now. So we continue to plug away at it. We continue to look for that second test site on Cape Han. I continue to try to strong-arm a few people into doing that. I still have a few tricks up my sleeve to be able to do that. And we're continuing to work on it bit by bit. I would say also that, Ron, I don't know what you've heard, but I think we're getting closer to a testing methodology that will give us results probably in the four to six-hour time window versus the 24 to 72-hour time window. And that will be a dramatic improvement over what we have right now. Our lab director has got four or five different vendors on the hook and will explore each and every option, knowing that some of those at any point in time could fail with testing methodologies and supply source and those sorts of things. So that will be a great benefit. I don't know if you've heard anything new, Dr. Newman, that I haven't heard.
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's great news. So we continue to work on it. Yeah, Sid?
Yeah, Barb. Have all the hospital staff been tested, including janitorial people, aides, food workers? Because if we're testing all the patients, that's half the ball score. But we ought to be testing all of the people who work there.
Yeah, we screen everybody. And I would say we've, folks have done a nice job screening. They identify themselves quickly and get them folk, get themselves to employee health, which does put folks out of work. We've had in the triple digits, numbers of employees out of work for signs and symptoms. And so the quarantining piece has gone well. We've not found anything that we've even thought of as person-to-person transmission within the hospital either. So, you know, that's sort of one of my triggers as well, that we're not in a good place. But we've not seen any hint of that at all. But universal testing, no. And I don't think anybody's really doing that right now, Sid, but we do keep our eye on that.
Well, if, if, how are you doing the screening? If you're screening people by symptoms or screening people by temperature, you're not going to pick up all of those asymptomatic people there who are still spreaders.
Yeah, I think the other piece of it is, is that the mask use is universal. And I think that that's sort of, that's the catch-all method, is that everybody gets a mask at the time of entry as an employee and they change those out every day. We have bins at all the entrances to be able to change those out. And folks like me are out and about watching for that mask use all the time. So I think that's our catch-all, to make sure that we're not having spread before people have signs and symptoms.
And I think that's an important point, Barb, is that the universal indoor mask use is huge. And I think it's the one thing that we all need to just keep hammering away on this board, whether we're talking about the schools, restaurants, or if you're inside any place except for your own home, you've got to wear a mask.
So I don't know of any place, Sid, that's doing universal testing of employees. I can certainly, and I have a pretty big risk management group, I'll ask out there and see if any folks are doing that yet. I've not heard that, but that would be a good question for the next meeting. I'll get back to you.
Well, in looking at the future too, when we start thinking about opening up places like Shalen Lou and things like that, we can do what we're doing, but that's still a very thin sieve. When testing is widely available, it would be possible to consider a scenario where anyone who signs up to listen to an opera at Shalen Lou and buys the tickets has to present a test result before they get in when the show finally goes on.
Yeah, that would, that would be the, sort of the, probably the end game. I think if we can get out ahead of that and more universal screening before they ever get to the door and give folks a chance to get that done, we should. Yeah. So we'll see. I keep chipping away at it every week, looking to get to that public health model of universal, just universal screening. And it's going to help, you know, Chastity, it's going to help Teresa and a lot of their contact.
Thank you.
You know, Bruce, just a question about that, since Dr. Wedmore brought it up. So if someone comes into this town right now and is, say, renting, renting a hotel room or renting an Airbnb or whatever, aren't, are we still in the phase where we're supposed to be quarantining for two weeks if you're coming in from another state?
Um, I, it's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Jen's are shaking their head, yes.
You know, if they're not, if folks aren't going to be, if they're coming in for a weekend, you know, can they come in and can they go out and participate in, you know, all the wonderful things we have to offer? I think, I don't know the answer to that question. Does anyone else know?
I believe it was passed. Yeah. Yeah. Unenforceable, but yes, it's still in place.
Wow. You know, because I know that up in Maine, you know, the hotels and the motels are requiring their guests to prove that they'd have a negative test before they can stay, they can stay in an inn or hotel or motel. And, you know, is that something that we can do locally? Our hotels are opening up phase two, like they opened up on Monday, right?
I think we're past that. I mean, I think they're open. I think several of them were actually full this past weekend.
I think that if we were to enforce that, that would essentially shut down the tourist industry.
Absolutely.
In Rockport. But, you know, something to think about is as we've sort of tamed this, the first surge in Massachusetts, we see from the numbers in Rockport that there's, you know, very little in the way of new cases. Other parts of the country are experiencing the opposite. And I think that the difference between our case load and in, say, the Southwest or Florida, et cetera, will grow to be much greater. And so the reason for, you know, enforcing that quarantine is going to become greater and greater. I mean, the necessity for it, if we're going to prevent new transmission from people bringing it to Rockport. But I don't know how we enforce that or whether our economy would, you know, would tolerate it. I agree, Ron. I think there's guidelines requiring hotels and inns to, you know, to clean, to not offer breakfast, to remove all materials from rooms, et cetera, et cetera. The checklist is pretty extensive to allow opening, but to try to prevent any, any spread and transmission. And I think if we're going to, you know, open up inns, hotels, motels and bed and breakfast, we need to rigorously follow those guidelines. And that's why, again, I think it's really important, you know, we talked briefly about it last, last week. If there are people who come and visit and go back to their hometowns, whether they're in Massachusetts or other states and test positive, it would be really important for us to get that information as soon as possible. They won't count as resident increases here directly, although they might lead to some for workers here in town. But we need to, as a tourist destination, really figure out how to track if folks are bringing in exposures.
Bruce, right now, is there any communication between states as far as tracing? Massachusetts has done a pretty good job on tracing. Other states have been less enthusiastic on that. But if someone is tested positive in Arizona and they spent a week or two weeks ago in an inn in Rockport, do we get that information from Arizona or are we on silos?
We should get that information.
You know?
Yeah, we should get that information. It may take a little while. We, they do have interstate communication at the state level. Sometimes, you know, we'll get a call at the local level, but usually that happens at the state level.
Yeah, I think it goes, yeah, it goes through the division of global migration and quarantine. So if we are notified of a case, like say it's a Rockport resident who tested positive, but who had just flown on a flight from another state, we gather all of the information about what airline they traveled on, the seat they sat in, who they were with, if they, if they switched seats on their flight. And we give that all to our state health department and then they give the information to the other states involved.
And the other states are doing it just as fastidiously?
They should be.
Should be, don't count.
Right. Hope, we hope. I mean, the only thing to, you know, we know that this has been done long before COVID-19. So we do this with other diseases like tuberculosis, measles, mumps, things like that. So there's a, there's a process in place that we've been using for a long time.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, let's head on to the next agi- agenda item. Consideration of current or additional restrictions related to COVID-19. Anything that enforcement of the Board of Selectmen or Board of Health? Anything that we need to talk about, reduce? Anything from anyone on that? Are we, yes, Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, I brought that up because the premise has been, and like the minutes that were corrected on the 28th of May, the premise is, when all is said and done, when there are egregious violations of the rules that the Board of Health puts in place, we enlist police to help us with that. And Bob sent an email saying that on one of the recent Department of Public Health reports, they were strongly emphasizing, this is not a local police involvement. If that's the case, how do you crack this nut?
Yeah, and it also, you know, I think part of this agenda item too is, you know, how do we help the chief and his officers sort of do some of this, you know, this enforcement and not put them in a bad position? A lot of it's coaching, some of it is training, some of it is those sort of non, I don't want to call them non-confrontational, but there's the, you know, the soft side of compliance. And how do we help the folks that are at that front line and the other businesses? We talked about this at the business call as well, because businesses could also see folks that are, that are not complying with the rules. And how do we help them to do this correctly, but also ramp it up and use the police when, when we need to? But enlist other folks in town to help us with the compliance issue and not just leave it to the police, but use them when we need to, as Dr. Wedmore said, for those cases where it's not been consistent or we've asked for compliance and it's not worked.
Okay.
So.
I would say the same is true for the staff at the transfer station. I've experienced many people, I would say, who are not in compliance at the transfer station. Some not even having a mask in their, on their person, others just wearing it like a beard. I mean, I don't know what we do to get the message through or to help the transfer station staff who already have enough to do to get people to comply. You know, we, we talked, we discussed this at our reopening committee meeting this morning a little bit, because I think the kind of general consensus, for example, I was fishing this past weekend and from my boat, I could see the jetty part of Bear Skin Neck. And probably 95% of the dozens of people, families out there, had masks on and were wearing them properly. And so we talked about kind of getting the message across that we're proud to be, you know, on the conservative side in the downtown area needing to wear masks in the transfer station. And we're proud of our numbers, that our numbers are really reasonable. And, you know, knock on wood, they've, they seem to have stabilized, at least at this point. But we talked about just kind of getting the, you know, getting the word out there and supporting everyone in town that works to say, you know, don't be embarrassed to, you know, say to, say to someone in the car next to you, you know, masks are required. Like, don't ever put yourself in an uncomfortable situation, but everyone should be proud of living somewhere where, you know, if Rockport gets the reputation of people come here because it's downtown is a safe place and masks are required, that's a good thing, in our view. So I think it's really about, you know, finding positive ways to support the law enforcement and the inspector. And, you know, maybe just at the reopening, we're going to talk to the chief more in our next meeting to see what else we can do to support them.
I have a colleague of mine that was in Rockport this weekend and she told me that she was downtown on Bear Skin Neck. And she said she saw everyone wearing masks. She thought that was great. And I was like, that's wonderful to hear. But my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you would need to have a mask if you cannot socially distance. And that would be a perfect example is at the transfer station.
No. 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 In Rockport, you're required to wear face covering downtown.
Downtown, no, I mean outside of downtown.
Outside.
And at the transfer station.
Yes, yes. I should have prefaced that, excuse me.
I wonder, Sarah, it would be great if positive reinforcement would work. And I don't know that it always does. I, and I don't want to put the burden on the chief and the police department, but I wonder if there would be occasional patrols and a presence that, both downtown and at the beaches, just-
Mitch, Mitch can talk about that. There's a lot, there's a lot going on.
Oh, oh, great.
Yeah.
One of the items that I referenced in my update each week, that we have, we've been paying every, every week for several days a week, firefighters and forest firefighters to go around and do educational enforcement. We've had police details downtown as well. Officers on bikes and officers on foot patrol up and down there. And the chief has been very clear with his officers that it is education, not confrontation. So handing out masks to people, reminding people. And in many cases, in many small towns, that's what's there. It's the police who are trying to handle the educational component, because they're in many cases the first call. But we've been very cognizant about having- But we've been very cognizant about having, you know, the educational folks, the firefighters and the forest firefighters, go out and engage with people and try to say, hey, you know, this is required. Certainly if something escalates, they let dispatch know. But we're not seeing too much of that. We're really not seeing too much of that. We're giving out a lot of masks, but we're not seeing a lot of people who are being overly upset or hostile towards folks.
I think two weeks ago, the chief said they had given out well over 1,000 masks.
And I think too, up at the transfer station, when you go in, the guy flags you in way up at the end, right before you get in there. Just getting, when you get to dump your trash and stuff, I don't know why he couldn't just say, do you have a mask? And if not, hand you one. It's one of the town masks, so let's just maybe ask him if they could start doing that to make sure people do have one or turn them away. Say, oh, I'm sorry, you can just go around that trailer and leave. You need to have a mask. Either wear one that I have or, you know, turn them away.
Are we getting a significant amount of complaints of people not wearing masks at the transfer station?
I've witnessed it.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're seeing it.
What level is it at? Do we know? Do we have a gauge on that?
I don't.
I don't know if it's that bad, honestly. When I've been, I haven't, I actually in the last few weeks have seen everyone except, like, because I watched really closely, I saw one person at the brush pile not wearing a mask last Saturday. But besides that, everyone had a mask on. So I think, you know, it's one of those things. It depends when you drive up the neck. It depends when you go to the transfer station. You know, it's not 100%, obviously.
Never will be.
Pretty good.
Yes, Dr. Wedmore?
Well, I think Ruth brought up a very easy and simple solution. There is a God who waves you through. And He could very easily, if there's no one, if one does not have a mask, simply say, by the by, a mask is required here. And if you don't have one, here's one on the top. And that would increase from the 97% perhaps, or maybe 99%. Very easy fix, someone who's there who's already on the ticket being paid.
I say something. I've sort of avoided downtown ever since this has all started. But this Sunday, this past Sunday, I walked my dog down and I was curious to see, in particular, how people following the rules. And I was kind of shocked when I walked past Front Beach. It was about 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon. At that point in the day, people were leaving the beach. And I know people are not required to wear masks if they're sitting on their blankets 12 feet away from everybody else. But I would say that people kind of streaming off the beach, I don't think there was more than 10% or 15% of people wearing masks. I had to walk down the middle of Granite Street because of sidewalks on either side, I mean on Beach Street, because on both sidewalks, people were walking, most of them without any masks. So I was surprised and disappointed at that. But on the other hand, we're looking at the number of cases in town very carefully and we're seeing really very few cases. Our beaches have been open for a while. I'm assuming this is the level of mask wearing that we've been seeing all along. So I think unless we see negative repercussions of the status quo, I'm not sure that we need to kind of rein in. If we get very, very strict, it's going to have an impact on businesses and other aspects of the functioning of the town. But I think we should be prepared that should we begin to see even, you know, modest increases, that we have to jump on it, maybe enforce more rigorously.
I think it's smart to have masks available with the police department, which obviously they've given out roughly 1,000. But it would be a good idea to also have them available at the transfer station and pass them out in a non-confrontational way to the few people that aren't using them.
Yep, we'll have DPW provide the attendance on and make sure that he's aware of what he should do.
Mitch, I think would be perhaps a good idea on your call to remind people when they leave Front Beach, a mask is required if they're continuing to walk downtown.
Okay, so a little more clear on that. Okay, I'll also make sure that we update the language a little bit on the restrictions list on the website to stress that a little bit more.
Okay, anything else? Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, just one thing in opening up. The Thatcher Island is now open to kayakers in private boats if you get out there. We're not going to be doing the tourist boats and the towers will remain closed. But we thought, since the Audubon has opened up their parks and Fish and Wildlife has as well, that it makes sense to be consistent with the other parts of the island. So the website now says that if you can get out to the islands on a kayak or you own a boat, you're welcome to walk around and enjoy the trails and the landscape.
That's great, that's wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along, let's go to letter G, long-term care in congregate living facilities updates. Do we have anything on Milburn Park and other places?
I'll update you on Milburn Park and the Housing Authority. I talked to Lee Duty down there, they're doing well. Everyone is staying socially distant. They haven't opened anything up yet. They don't have any people coming in except for individual caregivers for patients or clients that are there. And they're going with the state guidelines and they're probably in three or four, level three or four where they can open up things there. I also talked to Dawn, the manager at Pigeon Cove Ledges and Rockport High School Apartments, same thing. They're doing very well. They have no cases, no suspicious.
That's wonderful.
And then I talked to Heather over at the Old Farm and Supportive Living Center and all of their, the four clients over there. And they have numerous staff and everyone is testing negative now. So they're doing well also.
That's great.
I think they really appreciate the weekly calls. They know that they can call me if they have any questions and need masks or any other type of PPE, so they're good.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's go to letter H, the reopening advisory committee updates. Barb and Sarah Wilkinson, do you have anything for us?
We do. So reopening group has been really busy. Last week, we hosted a meeting for all. All business owners in town were invited. We had over 40 business owners attend. And I thought it was a great meeting. We shared, and Barb kicking at any time, business owners shared kind of tips and tricks who are already open. We learned some cool stuff that people are doing. And then we kind of outlined the local guidelines. We gave them an update on the restaurants. At the end, we asked, we're going to meet again, probably maybe early in the week of the 4th, kind of in another week or so. And we asked if they wanted to kind of split up, you know, and meet galleries and restaurants and then innkeeper separately. But they all seemed to agree overwhelmingly that they like to meet in the large group. We shared some updates from the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen. People seemed really, really happy just with the open communication. And, you know, we shared what we're doing to support the local businesses. Barb, do you have anything else on that?
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, part of our discussion in our upcoming meeting is, you know, we've got 4th of July coming. So, you know, is there a ramp up in how we help businesses and support businesses through that weekend, which could be busier than we saw last weekend? Which will be something we'll talk about. And then when to schedule that next all-business meeting?
Yep, yep.
Which I agree went really well.
Yeah, it was great. And as you've probably noticed, a few of the restaurants have, additional restaurants have started outdoor seating. Seems to be going really well so far. There's one application, I believe it's the Red Skiff, for our two boards to entertain a little bit later down the agenda. But so far, so good. Thanks to John Kulan, food inspector, for acting so efficiently and kind of, you know, going out of his way to just make sure that, you know, he's handling restaurants. I know that people are investing a lot of money. The town has invested in a lot of money. But so far, so good. And I think when you drive downtown now, it looks, it's keeping in the spirit of Rockport, but it's looking more alive. I drove past Dock Square today and every table outside the Blue Lobster Grill was full.
Nice, yeah, that's cool.
And somebody said that my place was booked over the weekend. So I think we're on the right track with, you know, kind of supporting. And, you know, a few people have said, well, what are you doing for the shops? But honestly, we're lifting everyone however we can. And by lifting the restaurants, we're hoping to lift all businesses. Because when people come and they're able to find food, they'll stay longer and they'll shop and they'll hopefully spend a night. So I think that so far, things are going well down there, you know, downtown especially. And then today, in our meeting today, we discussed outdoor displays. So our next step is either today or tomorrow, the Board of Selectmen's office is releasing the outdoor display application for the season. And then at one of our meetings next week, we'll kind of review all of those applications and then pass them along to the Board of Selectmen. And we talked about last week for the Board of Health to kind of review. But our group is going to do kind of a first pass as we see what we can do, what we can allow outside for retail.
Go ahead, Sarah, I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
Is there any appetite, no pun intended, to look at those Jersey barriers? I've had, not complaints, but some people have suggested maybe put some buoys or lobster traps, kind of to dull them up a little bit, to soften them up. And if so, who would be the person to do that?
I think that if people wanted to donate, notice I said donate because the town has made a significant several thousand dollar investment in the Jersey barriers. So nothing permanent can be done to them because they're going to be repurposed for DPW and that type of thing. But if someone would like to donate even temporarily, lobster traps or some kind of decorations, they should contact the Selectmen's office, I would say. Right, Mitch?
Yes, we're in a position to paint them either.
Yeah, we can't paint them. Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, very good.
Yep, and they can, honestly, they can even reach out to me and I can, you know, I'm happy to talk to people about it. I think Barb has more to add too from our meeting.
Go ahead, Barb.
Yeah, we're also going to spend a little bit of time over the next week and at our next meeting talking about the library. You know, I think it's used a lot by our seniors.
Hang on, Barb, you got to unmute.
Okay?
Here we go.
Okay. We're going to spend a little bit of time in our next meeting talking about the library. It's used so much by our seniors. We want to make sure that they feel comfortable using the library again. We want to make sure that there's a good understanding of how this virus can and cannot be transmitted on a piece of paper, i.e. a book. And make sure that we're following the state guidelines, but also being somewhat reasonable and helping to make sure people feel comfortable and confident using the library again and helping the staff feel comfortable about that as well. So we're going to spend a little bit of time next week on that.
Thanks, Barb.
Anyway, Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, going back to Sarah's point about the New Jersey barriers, I commend the opening committee because when you start going downtown, you see the tables out, the umbrellas. It's not exactly a tractsoria, but it is a bit more welcoming than it has been, certainly. And the New Jersey barriers, could that not be a mural upon which we could have some kids do some artwork? Can always be taken off when you use them up at a different place. But maybe emphasize that as some participation the kids are beautifying the town.
I don't think that, since we're not sure where they're going to be used next, I don't think we can paint or do anything like that on them. But maybe we can come up with something creative. I'll give that some thought. I mean, it's a great idea. We just have to be able, the DPW has to be able to use them for like official town business after. So we just have to be careful that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot on that one. But let me give it some thought, that's a great idea.
Well, you know, the point is, Sarah, those are gray barriers. Now, if you end up with a lot of murals on them, you can repaint them gray and no one will know the difference. And they're still versus versatile, just as functionally useful.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and Our Haven did something. They did, you know, the great murals on the walls using tape. You know, so there may be some sort of temporary things we could do as well. It's a great idea, Sid. We can bring it back to our group.
It looks like Sid's going to host a coloring station down at Dock Square.
Yep.
This week, we entered step two or phase two with new openings. Is that going to, are we going to address that lower down in the agenda? Or is this the appropriate place? Because now there's indoor dining is allowed. And I don't know whether we're going to go through the same or a similar process with applications and plans reviewed the way we did for outdoor dining. Or should we do that when John puts this review?
Yeah, why don't we? Yeah, that's fine, yep. So John Kulan is here. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no requirement to do the plans, but you are making visits to those folks?
Correct. We're not requiring written plans, especially since I inspected the restaurants when they were looking to reopen and be set up for takeout or delivery. And at that time, in most cases, we discussed what their setup would be, what their plans would be, the process when indoor dining was allowed again while still employing the mandates and guidelines for COVID-19 compliance. And a number of folks have said it's, today, it is just not practical for them to open up indoors. How many customers could they have indoors while maintaining a six-foot distance and the cleaning of frequently touched surfaces and making sure that everybody was wearing a mask before they came in? And therefore, some folks have stayed with either a takeout or delivery, be it to home or curbside. And when you get right down into each and every establishment, you see how one place, it seems to be just ideal for indoor dining and maintaining distance and others are on the other extreme. So I've generally supported whatever people have been deciding. And there is, the longer we are in this pandemic, the more people are not only educating themselves, but looking at how they can maintain the mandates and guidelines and still stay as a profitable business. So part of the function that I'm trying to provide is a sounding board, although it's not my decision, unless given to me, whether to approve or not approve of whatever somebody is proposing. It's generally working out very well.
Anyone else, any other comments regarding this?
Sorry. How about other aspects of this most recent opening? I don't know if there are barber shops and, well, not barbers because they've been open for a while, but, you know, the other personal care services. Do we have any of those around town that will be opening?
Yeah, nail salons.
Do we have those? And are they inspected or are they, they're not approved evidently if restaurants are not being approved?
Yeah, actually, I don't know if nail salons are approved. I'll add the, I actually haven't added the nail salon link to our business reopening guide, but I'll add that probably this evening. So we have a link for each type of business as they open, just to the state guidelines and checklist. But maybe that's a question for.
Actually, this morning today, when I was at graduation in Saugus, two of my colleagues were complaining that nail salons aren't open. So maybe that's the case. I don't know why I remember that, but. So maybe that's the case, I don't know why I remember that, but.
They're part of part two, phase two, I think.
Do we have any in Rockport? I'm trying to think.
What's that?
Do we have any nail salons in Rockport?
We do.
Yes, Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, I believe the Gloucester Nail Salons are open this week. At least wise, my wife came back with new nails and I don't think she got that done at the transfer station.
So can we, John Kulan, is that, is that a question? I know it's not a food inspection, but are they?
They can be approved to open if they present a plan that complies with the mandates and guidelines set by the state and anything further by, by the town. The town has not gone any further than the state. But it is a, a challenge for any of the personal care businesses to, to comply. But while it is a challenge, it is not insurmountable if they, they choose to commit to the mandates and guidelines. There are, as Dr. Wedmore referenced, there are these businesses that are opening in other communities. And that is only those businesses that have committed, to my understanding, to, to doing it right. And the right way is to go on to one of the links that, that you have been providing and just check the boxes, fill in the blanks, sign when you're ready to commit to it and go forth. Certainly masks must be used, distancing must be used, and the frequent cleaning of frequently touched surfaces must be done. And it is best to have that in a plan that can be then verified. So we will entertain any plan from any business person who wishes to submit it. And of course, we caution people against just going ahead and opening without the approval of the appropriate town officials, because that, that, that's just a recipe for disaster. Okay?
So Mitch, have we gotten any plans?
Are Leslie responsible for inspecting and improving plans for personal service businesses in Rockport?
We have not had any applications to my knowledge. Mitch, do you know of any?
So there's nothing that's come in regarding the control plans? Leslie, have you, how have you handled personal care businesses in the past in, in general?
So their licenses are through state agencies, not through the local boards of health. My understanding of the state rules currently are that when a business self-certifies, residents, customers can make a complaint to the town and then the Board of Health would go and investigate. So that's, I think, the mechanism that's in place statewide.
So are these self-certifications required to be filed with the towns?
No, they're not required to be filed according to the state guidelines.
Well, but in Rockport, we actually were requiring them for, did we require them for all businesses?
You did, so what we'll do is have Chelsea touch base with those couple of businesses in the next few days, just to make sure they're aware that that requirement exists.
Yeah, so basically, our point in doing that was not to increase the workload for any business and not to be a barrier to opening. So we just simply ask that they take the state's self-attestation. And a lot of them are also just sending in the checklist, a lot of businesses, you see the checklist taped up in the window and just sending that by email to the COVID-19 email address, just like the restaurants and retail stores. And then we keep it on file and that way, if there's any issue, the health inspector or Board of Health knows who to reach and kind of who's managing. So I think it'd be great if we could reach out to those businesses as well and just let them know that. I think there's only. Great.
Stop it. I was yelling at my dog, not you guys.
Barking at somebody.
Great, I think we're good on the reopening, Paul.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Barb, for the update. We're going into consideration for outdoor dining proposal, and we have one from Red Skiff. Mitch, do you want to tackle that one and we can add to it?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, so exactly the same process as last week. The plan has been submitted. We know exactly where, where they'll be, they're, they're prepared to operate within the two spaces that match everybody else's. The police chief, fire chief and DPW did their verification of the space yesterday, and they've signed off, subject to that. Should the boards approve this evening, which the recommendation to both boards is that you approve it, subject to final sign-offs. The barricades can then be put in place and then John Kulan can, can go down and do his sign-off.
Okay. Excellent, anything else on that?
Somebody has to make a motion.
Yes, I mean, anymore, you want to add Mitch or you're all set?
No, that's it, we recommend approval from both boards.
Perfect, anyone, any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion? Leslie Whalen?
I just wanted to point out that the tables are 72 inches apart, not the backs of the seats with people in them.
Okay.
Yes, I think that'll be something that when John goes down, they've been fine tuning some of the plans a little bit to, to address some of those issues. Once the barricades get put in, I think all the paper plans have altered slightly.
Okay, anything else? Hearing, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, including the Board of Health, correct?
Correct.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Barbara McCarthy?
Yes.
Denise Donnelly?
Aye.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Town Administrators Report and Incident Command Updates. Mitch, do you have anything on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we've already touched on some of the mask patrols that have been going on. We're working very closely with the town clerk to prepare for the election next Tuesday. So polls are open on Tuesday, June 30th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We have a logistics meeting at the end of the week, myself, the clerk, DPW and police. We have every, every possible safeguard at this point in place, so we are. The clerk has shrunk down the number of poll workers she has, just the bare minimum that she needs. We have barricades that have arrived that after the election will get used in the offices, so these, these room dividers, those will be set out so we can make sure that we're properly directing the flow of traffic in each of the locations. We'll be having a DPW employee assigned to each polling station from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to do continual wipe downs. The clerk has also agreed to a couple of pauses, particularly after lunch, a brief pause for the sanitizing machines to go through and, and, and put their fog or the mist in to sanitize the area. At this point, we're, we're deploying everything we can, we'll, we'll also have UV air purifiers in, in all the locations to try to enhance the airflow, we'll have the doors open, the windows open in the ventilation systems where one exists turned on to keep the airflow going. So certainly, the clerk's office is still reminding folks they can vote early via mail. I think Pat Brown said to me this afternoon that 60-plus a day are going out in requests, so a really good, good amount, but for those who prefer to vote in person, we strongly, strongly ask that you wear your mask when you come in and that we ask everybody to be patient. Things may take a little bit longer. There'll be Plexiglas barriers up between the poll workers checking in people. So we ask for patience from everyone as they go through the day. Everybody's certainly doing their best to keep everyone safe.
Right.
And budget, first portion was already taken care of with the 112. Our contractor notice letters will be, we've done the first round, the second round will go out in the next two days, which would close that out. And that, we're, we're going to be moving forward with FinCom to talk further about updated capital requests, probably next week, and then it'll be back to the Selectmen for further discussion. And in our March Towards Town Meeting, which is yet to be set, a lot of towns had a meeting the last couple of days. So we're trying to look at what worked really well, what, what didn't work. So more to come on that for both boards at your next meeting.
That's it, thank you. Thank you, any questions from the Board of Selectmen for Mitch? Hearing none, let's go, continue on, health agent, health inspector and health nurses.
I think Dr. Newman.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Newman.
It seems to me that, that the election in person is a fairly risky thing. And is it legal or desirable before the November election to strongly encourage people to vote remotely, you know, paper, you know, absentee ballot? I mean, is that something that we could or should, you know, have a campaign and encourage it for November?
You certainly could, the, the clerk's office, I think Melanie is on the call, there she is. Hang on one second, I'm going to unmute Melanie, Melanie Waddell, Assistant Town Clerk. Melanie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Melanie Waddell, Assistant Town Clerk. Currently on the website, there are two applications for absentee voting. And one of them is just for the municipal, excuse me, for the municipal coming up next week. The other is an application for absentee for all elections this year. So if you use that one, check off all elections this year and get mail-in ballots for the September primary and the November federal.
Yeah, you certainly have made it easy, it's, it's a great process. But should through the, through Mitch's weekly announcements or through, I mean, should we actively promote it? I mean, I've already applied because I don't really want to go and expose other people to me or me to them in November. And.
I started a Facebook page and we've been putting it out via social media and through these meetings and, you know, as much as we can word of mouth. Do you have other suggestions of other places that might be more visible, please let us know.
Yeah, the thing that comes to mind is Mitch's announcements.
Yes.
Everybody gets those.
Yeah, we can certainly continue to remind people.
And also, we could, we could have those forms available when the people do go and vote in person, that they could pick, pick one up and take it home with them so that they're all set for the next election.
That's a good idea.
Sure, we also have some in the vestibule in the back, the back, back door of Town Hall, so if anybody's looking for one.
You know, Mitch, if it's not too late, I wonder, you know how you can do a code red that's just, that's not a call? So it doesn't seem like an emergency, just an email? And what is it, just an email and text? I don't know if it's possible to do that, you know, maybe like early tomorrow or something, just to give people one more chance.
Yeah.
So wouldn't, you know, the call sometimes is, can be alarming to people. And I know you shared it a lot in the calls, but maybe just one more email and text saying.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with the clerk's office tomorrow with Pat and Melanie to come up with something that could work for that, potentially attaching the applications to it.
Great.
So I'll, I'll chat with Pat and Melanie and we'll come up with something.
Okay, anything else, Mitch?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anything else from public health nurses or agents? Anyone from the Board of Health? Okay, hearing none, let's go on to letter M. The BOS, Board of Selectmen and Board of Health meeting scheduled change to every two weeks. I've enjoyed meeting bi-weekly with all of you, but maybe we're at a time where we can go back to our regular schedule? What are, what are people's thoughts?
I think Dr. Wedmore asked for this and I, I would concur from the operations end. I think if it was a joint meeting every other week, we wouldn't lose any momentum on what's happening here.
Okay, are people in agreement with that from both boards?
I'm ready.
I think the downside would be if a business like, you know, like John said earlier, like say a nail salon wanted to open up, so long as John could do that independent of these boards, because I would hate to see businesses being held, held up waiting two weeks.
Yeah, I think we might have to meet next week because we could potentially have a bunch of outdoor display permits. So like you just said, that's a great point, I just wouldn't want to hold anyone up from opening. But I think once those settle down, we could totally move to every two weeks.
Do you want to meet a week from Thursday? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Barb.
No, I think we also need to not forget that 4th of July is, is on our radar screen. And just, I think next week would set us up for that, as long as we paid attention to that and anything we might need to do a little bit different for the, for the long weekend. But we can talk about it in our reopening meetings as well.
Yeah. Next is election night, I know, so.
Oh, right.
Why don't we, could we meet on the 2nd of July, which is that Thursday? What, what do people's schedules look like, is that, is that good?
It's good for me, I'll be at camp, but I'll zoom right in.
Yep, works.
It works.
Is that good with everyone, both boards?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you guys.
July 2nd and then we'll go to a fortnightly schedule?
Yes.
Yep.
Six o'clock start, is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It'll remain at six o'clock, okay, thank you, everyone, and anything else on scheduling? Okay, hearing none, let's.
If, I have one thing, Paul, if at the next meeting, can we have on the agenda an item so that if a business is going to be delayed from opening, we'll give John the power to sort of get it going until final approval somehow?
I don't think there's any, I don't, I think that for the plans, they just submit their plans, right? Besides that, I don't.
I, I don't think we have anything at this point, Mary Beth, that would necessarily be stopped from opening. John, can you think of anything that's, at this point, would be stopped if we didn't have the meeting?
No, however, I, I see the, the concern, I certainly understand it. You don't want to have a, a lag time. However, we have been soliciting plans from businesses and, and groups in town that normally would see a, a quick turnaround. However, I'd say people should be very well educated at this point that because of the pandemic, people need to maintain a line of communication and get their, their written plans in right away. We can always adjust them, edit them, change them to fit a changing, not only set of, a changing set of mandates and guidelines, but also a changing set of needs on the ground. So that's just my appeal to, to the community, to not wait to the last minute, but getting plans in right away. And I think that we've got a fairly good record of our turnaround and we should be able to maintain that.
Okay, Barb?
I think we should just, Mary Beth and I will probably have a first report of the school reopening at the next meeting. The first meeting is tomorrow evening, so just leave a little space on the agenda for us. So just leave a little space on the agenda for us. Superintendent's done a nice job sort of setting that up and, and being very detail oriented. So don't you agree, Mary Beth, we'll probably have something to, at least an initial report?
Yep, it'll be that. And also I, it sounds like Amy's going to have some stuff with graduation in August that she's looking for some help with. So those two, those two items might need some attention.
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, let's go to our last item on the agenda, item M, public comment. As we've, we'll, we'll take public comment, of course. Mitch will call on people. We ask that you use the hand signal on, on, on your computer and state your name and address and what you'd like to say to both boards. Go ahead, Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please use the hand raise function. We have Charlie Seedy who wishes to speak. Charlie, go ahead and unmute yourself and your address for the record, please. There we go.
I'm unmuted. Charlie Seedy in Frank Street. You know, there are three of us sitting here who are kind of interested in what the post-election schedule might bring. At least one of us is going to be joining the board. Does that mean Thursday, the 2nd? Does it mean two weeks thereafter? How's this work, folks? Done.
So it, it means the 2nd.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mary Korsland and then I see Kate Cahill and then Carol Cook. So Mary Korsland, you can go ahead and unmute and your address, please.
Mary Korsland to Green Street. Just a note, if folks aren't aware, I have been campaigning as a write-in candidate for the planning board. There are two, two seats that are vacant that nobody's running for and so I've put my hat in the ring. Just a note there. My second, my, my question is, as it relates to the entertainment permits that the town of Rockport reviews and reapproves every year. Typically that process has been completed by now, but I'm not aware that any of these permits have been reviewed or renewed. I'm just curious as to that process.
Are you asking about the, the outdoor entertainment?
Yes.
To my knowledge, we've not received any.
So in the event that a party was to come forward with a permit for an event, to the extent that they would comply with COVID regulations, how would that be handled?
So if there was a request for outdoor entertainment, as it would be in the past, the selectman would need to sign off on it if they were looking for an outdoor entertainment license. So it would need to be in a, in a selectmen's meeting.
Thank you.
Mitch has DPH authorized outdoor entertainment venues as part of?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think so yet.
I don't think so either.
All right.
Okay, Kate, go ahead and unmute and full name and address for the record, please.
Kathleen Cahill, 3 Mount Pleasant Street. Katie's gift shop. Two things, one is at the dump requiring, and I'm all for masks at the dump. I've been doing that even before you mandated it. I thought that was actually part of the, the whole thing. But you're not required to wear them driving in and I usually have, they, just the potential to, to slow things down and just so to let you know, that's going to slow things down if you have a, an attendant checking that everybody has a mask because not everybody's wearing them when they're driving in, myself included, although I wear it when I get in there. Secondly, a compliment. I had a customer come in the store today and tell me that the public restrooms were very clean and she was very happy with them. In fact, I can hear them working in there as we speak with my doors open. Question, when are, are there any plans to expand the hours like 8:00 AM now that some of the breakfast places are open? I know in the past, they've been open 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Just a thought, because 10, 10:00 AM seems a little late for breakfast. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. So at this point, it's, it's based on the staffing that we have available, not anticipating any expansion yet at this point. Okay, Carol Cook. Carol, you can go ahead and unmute and your address for the record, please.
171B Thatcher Road. This is in relation to the upcoming elections, all three of them. I really don't think we have done a great job of advertising to the public that they can get in, they can get those mail-in applications. I suggest that that application, the one that Melanie mentioned that where you can check that you want all elections this year, you want mail-in ballots, that that application be put right in our two post offices and what, and the application should be posted on the bulletin board in the post office. I think I suggested this before, but nobody did anything about it. I mean, many people go into the post office and if they see it, you know, it's just another way of promoting it because quite frankly, I am worried about what, what kind of shape are we going to be in in November or in September? God, you know, the way this COVID thing is going, it's terrible. So we should do the best we can to protect our citizens. And so I'm just suggesting that you take a whole bunch of those applications and put them in the two post offices and post one on the bulletin board of each. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please use the hand raise function or please raise your hand in your video. Okay. And anyone on the phone lines who wishes to speak? Please speak now, the lines are unmuted. Okay, no takers, Mr. Chair, all set.
Okay, thank you, Mitch, and thank you for the public comment of all those who chose to, to speak. Is it appropriate for Selectman Donnelly to make the motion to adjourn our last meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been, is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved in second and roll call vote. Barbara McCarthy?
Yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passed. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.